Oh, I see. Look like an air compressor.
Okay. It's nice. Yes, that's perfectly fine.
That's it. Passwords.
Yeah, I do.
Find the...
Man.
Hi, how are you?
I'm in.
Hey, let me in that time.
I know.
It's amazing what happens when you use the right password.
Oh. Really?
He's in now.
Mm-hmm.
Plus two. Plus two.
They didn't do that.
Right.
Unfortunately. They just did this too recently.
I came up to the... I didn't see you when I came up. I went up to the... Oh.
All right, good evening. Welcome to the April 23 meeting of the Garden Grove City Council. We're going to start with Housing Authority, which is led by Councilmember Fabulie.
Yes, Madam Clerk, could you please roll call?
Commissioner Beckles, Commissioner Bredegum, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Klaufenstein, Commissioner Tuho-Wen, Commissioner O'Neill, Commissioner Solario, Vice Chair Kim Nguyen, and Chair Bowie.
Could I ask our attorney to start the invocation? In the... Oh, I see, I mean the city council.
You're on council, yeah. I'll do that.
Is there oral communication for Housing Authority?
None specifically for Housing.
Since none, I'm closing oral communication and move on to consent items. We have two items, 2A and 2B. So it's just a routine, and so I...
I'll move the balance.
Second?
Second.
Also the vote? Any matter from the chairs, commissioner, and director?
I'm still waiting on one vote. Motion received, nine yes votes.
Okay. Matter from the chair or commissioners or directors? I have one item. Last week, I received an email from a veteran. He is in a difficult situation and would like to see if he can receive the 608 Housing Assistant. And talking to Mr. Danny Huing, we closed the application period in 2010, which is about nine years ago. And these veterans did not know about the program and did not apply for it. And he may also be... It's grimy that he, between 2010 and now, nine years have passed. There are many more veterans who came out of the services. They sacrifice for our nation. And many of them may have died in the battle. And so for the last nine years, I imagine there can be a lot of veterans that need help. And right now, our 608 Housing Authority have nothing to help them. So I would like to ask, you know, Mr. Danny Huing to... And Scott Stye to cry out to Congress, especially to our representative, and to other cities nearby, to see what else can we do to help our veterans? Because it's really broke my heart to see the veteran who put their life on the line defending our nation. Many of them did not want to be in the battle because they was in the military that they had to put their life on line. And now they are getting out of services, and they need help, and there's nothing we can do to help. So I understand that the rule as it apply, we cannot get any more people unless we open the enrollment period again. And right now, there are about 10,000 people on the waiting list, is that right?
About 14,000.
14,000. But not being able to help the veteran is really broke my heart. And I think we cannot just say, "No, we cannot." We need to fire away, or at least communicate this issue to Congress and see what else can be done, or work with other housing authority to see if they can help the veterans. And I would like to direct, you know, Housing Authority staff to look into it and report to us at the next Housing Authority meeting. Thank you.
Do you need a second?
Do I need to have support from the colleague to do that?
I'll offer it.
Well, yes. So we can have... I mean, if you want an action item, yes, it does need a second and a vote.
Second.
Madam Clerk, can we call the vote, please?
Motion received, nine yes votes.
Thank you. Since no other matters, I now adjourn the meeting to the next regular Housing Authority meeting to be held on May 20.
Thank you. We will convene the Garden Grove City Council. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Councilmember Bredegum, Councilmember O'Neill, Councilmember Tuho-Wen, Councilmember Bowie, Councilmember Kim Nguyen, Mayor Protem Klaufenstein, and Mayor Jones.
Here.
Hey, can I ask our city clerk, Terry Palmeroy, to lead us in the invocation? And then can I ask Councilmember George Bredegum to lead us in the pledge of allegiance thereafter?
Everyone, please stand and prepare yourself according to your faith, and will you bow your head as I pray? Dear wise and loving Father, thank you on behalf of all who are here tonight. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Amen.
Art, begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty.
All righty, takes us on to presentations. We do have a couple tonight, starting with a community spotlight in recognition of Lieutenant John Reynolds and Dr. Dawn Miller as 2019 Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce Man and Woman of the Year.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the staff would like Lieutenant John Reynolds and Dr. Dawn Miller to please come forward. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council takes great pleasure in recognizing Lieutenant Reynolds and Dr. Miller this year's Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce Man and Woman of the Year for their exceptional efforts and sustained contributions to Garden Grove. Every year, the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce selects two dedicated, service-oriented individuals who demonstrate community pride through volunteer efforts. It is the city's privilege to honor these two exceptional individuals, and we will begin with the Man of the Year, Lieutenant Reynolds. Lieutenant Reynolds has been a member of the Garden Grove Police Department since 1995. For 24 years, he has gone above and beyond to enhance the Garden Grove community with his spirit of service. Since 2009, Lieutenant Reynolds has been on the Board of Directors for the Boys and Girls Club of Garden Grove. As president, he plays an integral role in developing new corporate partnerships. Lieutenant Reynolds is also a member of the Kiwanis Club of Greater Garden Grove. He served as vice president in 2015 and as president in 2016, introducing a STEM program that allowed Kiwanis members to work with Lamson Elementary School students. Next, we have our Woman of the Year, Dr. Miller, who also checks my eyes from time to time. Dr. Miller moved to Garden Grove in 1983 and is the founder and owner of Dawn M. Miller, O.D. and Associates, located on historical downtown Main Street. Dr. Miller has been on the Board of Directors for the Boys and Girls Clubs of Garden Grove since 1984, serving as president, vice president, secretary, and treasurer. She also served on the Board of Directors for the Garden Grove Strawberry Festival Association since 1986, serving as president in 1997 and in 2019. Dr. Miller is part of the nonprofit Flying Samaritans of Orange County and a member of the Board of Directors for the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce and Life Share, Inc. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present Lieutenant John Reynolds and Dr. Dawn Miller with a resolution in recognition of their selection as 2019 Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce Man and Woman of the Year. The city congratulates both of you for this well-deserved achievement and commends your noble efforts in bringing out the best in our community.
Very good.
I'll be short and sweet, since we just had our chief's presentation. From my perspective, I just want to... I definitely want to thank the Chamber of Commerce, fine members of our council, the mayor, Mayor Protem, the city manager, the police department, who's also supported me, allowing me to do the volunteer hours and times that I do. I'm very thankful to the community. I love the community of Garden Grove. Everybody's been very, very good to me. Friends that I've met in Strawberry Festival Foundation in Kiwanis, daytime, nighttime. It's unimaginable to be doing the things I'm doing today. I'm very thankful for Rochelle Gillerman, Boys and Girls Club, Mark Shremanian, CEO. Those people have really helped me develop. Steve Sanders kind of mentored me along the way as a volunteer. And I'm so thankful that everybody's entrusted me with some of the responsibilities I've had along this journey in my life. And I just want to say thank you very much and congratulations to my sister here, Dawn. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, John. And thank you to the council for this additional large recommendation... Large resolution. I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce as well. And, you know, all of this sounds like a lot of work, but there's so much joy in volunteering. And I'd encourage everybody to take part in the community. And you know what? We're having a big celebration next month. So the Strawberry Festival is coming back, and I'm inviting each and every one of you. And whoever yelled out "hippo" when Scott said that I was his eye doctor, it's okay for him to say it. It's not okay for me to say it. So he was within order. So I brought each of you the new pin, hot off the presses. So I'd like to present you with the 2019 Garden Grove Strawberry Festival official pin, "Celebrating Family Together." And that's what we are in Garden Grove. We are one big family.
Before we go on to the next one, I'm going to do something because the city clerk is rolling her eyes at me. It went out of order, and I... We just gave away proclamations that we hadn't even approved yet. So I was supposed to bring forward consent items 3A and 3B for approval, which pertain to the resolution for Lieutenant John Reynolds and Dawn Miller. And then the other one is the next item coming up, which is the proclamation for Building Safety Month. So if I could make a motion to approve 3A and 3B, pulling those forward from our consent...
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All righty. And with that, we'll go on to...
And, Mr. Mayor, if I could, on the second proclamation that council advanced on Building and Safety Month, I wonder if you might indulge our chief building official, David Dent, to just say a word or two about chief building?
We're now going back to 1B, which is the...
Or am I kind of going out of order here?
No, I went out of order, and I was trying to get us back on track. So we're now going back to 1B, which is exactly that.
No, council, yeah, if you approve 3A and 3B. David is with 3B, that you just approved.
Oh. Okay, okay. Gotcha. Sorry, I was confused. I had those two tied together.
It's still the April, April 1st.
Yeah, it's still April. Well, welcome. Good evening, Chief Building Official David Dent. Hello, council and mayor. I have with me ICC's representative for the proclamation. And it's a great day in Garden Grove that we're able to bring Building Safety Month to Garden Grove. We do have an event coming up. It's going to be a celebration for the whole month. It's something that needs to be promoted, needs to be outreach, needs to bring the whole level of Building Safety Month to Garden Grove. And I'm excited about the new event coming forward. I'm excited about the month. And I'll have ICC representatives speak a little bit on what ICC is about and what the month is about.
Good evening. My name is Susan Doughty, and I'm from the International Code Council, which is ICC. We're publishers of the building codes, and we also sponsor Building Safety Month. ICC is located in Brea, so it's not too far away, but we're nationwide as well as worldwide. And what we try to do with Building Safety Month is raise the awareness of the important work that your Building and Safety Division does for the community, adopting the latest set of codes and making sure that buildings are constructed in accordance with those codes through the perma technicians, building inspectors, plan reviewers, and the chief building official, David Dent. So we thank you for recognizing May as Building Safety Month and for recognizing the important work that David and his staff does. Thank you very much.
Just to give a little update, the event is going to be next week, May 1. We're going to have an event here at the CMC. And it's going to be a region-wide event. That's going to be contractors, building owners, other jurisdictional building and safety. And they're going to come in, and we're going to have a panel. We're going to speak. We're going to answer questions, provide information. And it'll be a great event from now until the future. Thank you.
Okay, we now go on to oral communications. I do have two cards. What's that, 1B? Yeah. 1B. Seriously. Okay, I'm back on track.
Mayor Jones and council, item 1B is Overview of the SARAH, which is Scanning Analysis Response and Assessment for the Beach and Garden Grove Boulevard Community Improvement Project as presented by the Garden Grove Police Department, with some comments from Mr. Stiles.
Yeah, just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Last week, at my department director's meeting, the police department gave us a little briefing on some terrific work that they were doing on Beach Boulevard, specifically with some law enforcement efforts, some code enforcement efforts, working together with some of our motel properties there that have been a problem for us from time to time. You will remember that probably within the last year, we, under Chief Elgin's guidance, we started a kind of a coordinated law enforcement effort in conjunction with the City of Westminster, the Stanton, with the Sheriff's Office and Garden Grove Police Department to truly try to get a handle on some of the issues we're experiencing. Since then, our police department has been ramping up those efforts and doing some really great work. They then partnered with our code enforcement team, David Dent and his staff, who you just heard from, actually doing some work in the motels themselves and taking a look, not just at some law enforcement issues, but also some of the code, building code issues that were really probably quite frightening at the time. And so they gave us a little update on the work of that project. I was very impressed with the work that they've done. They've actually reduced significantly some of the calls for service that we're making to those, some of the properties there. And that's really important. Some of the properties, I think, are particularly... They're in District 1 and probably some impact with District 3, probably, in the vicinity, maybe 2 a little bit. But when we're reducing the number of runs we're making to some of those properties, that frees up our officers to be out in the neighborhoods more patrolling and providing other services. So I asked the police department, specifically Sergeant Wimmer, to be here and to give us a little update on the work of the SARAH project, what they're doing. And I just felt that the community would be very interested in hearing the work that they're doing as well, as I know the council members are. So with that, I'll turn it over to the police department.
Good evening. It's city council. And Mayor Jones, I appreciate the opportunity to allow us to present this. I also want to introduce, my partner in this was Officer Nick Almeida. He's a lateral from the Montclair Police Department, and he's been a cop for eight years, terrific officer. And he really was the driving force behind the presentation. I also wanted to let you guys know that this is just a general overview. I gave you guys booklets with a lot more information that when you guys get time, you can look at them and go through it. It has a lot more details about what we did, rather than just PowerPoint, that's, you know, a quick presentation of the overview. So basically, what we did was we created a mission statement, and I'm going to go over what SARAH is and why we determined that Beach and Garden Grove Boulevard needed one. Our mission statement is to protect and improve the quality of life in the surrounding neighborhoods through community policing, administrative, and street-level enforcement, and by working with businesses and their owners and employees. Why we chose Beach and Garden Grove Boulevard is obviously it's riddled with crime. If you drive through that area, you'll see overt drug use, whether it be injecting narcotics or smoking methamphetamine. Virtually what it was turning into was Skid Row. It was not uncommon to see 25 to 50 transits congregating, using drugs, urinating in public, passed out, and was extremely problematic. The residents routinely complain about this area, as well as commuters coming through our city. There's thousands of people that travel through Beach and Garden Grove Boulevard on a daily basis, and they would call and complain. Most importantly was that this area, when we were looking at it, it was July of last year, was generating the most calls of service for the police department. So if you could picture that intersection, only half of that intersection truly belongs to Garden Grove Boulevard, but was actually generating the most amount of calls of service. Garden Grove Boulevard but was actually generating the most amount of calls of service. It was completely draining our resources. The officers at work, BE11 which is similar to District 1, were continuously always in that area which then led to them basically neglecting or not being able to get to other parts of their BE or the western parts of the BE like Valley View or Western. It's also a complete burden on the community and it compromised public safety completely. So, probably wondering what a SARAH project is. Basically, there's four components of it. The first is you scan, you basically, we looked at what the problems were. There were multiple problems. Then you analyze what's going on, why the problems are occurring, and then we'll determine what type of problem solutions we can to make to fix the problems. At the end of it, we'll do a basic general overview to see what worked, what didn't work, and then going forward, we'll implement those. So, with this project, we made quite a few, well, I'll get into it a little bit later, but quite a few new things that we determined that were great for the police department. And I think in the future, as we go forward, we'll get even better at it. So, who participated? Basically, we made a coalition of forces. We wanted to make this a team effort, not just the police department. In the past, the police department has tried to implement some SARAH projects and some crime triangles with some success, but once we, Nick and I analyzed the prior SARAH projects, we noticed that, you know, working in a team environment, as the city manager talked about earlier, working with code enforcement, working with Child Protective Services, OCTA, code enforcement, animal control, a lot of these different, and we also used all of our specialty units within the police department as well as the fire department. So, we basically went out and talked to every single department, whether it be within the city or the county, and asked for their help and assistance in doing so. And they were absolutely great to work with. So, what we did, like I touched on earlier, is we looked at prior SARAH projects, whether it be from that area which we had done before or in other parts of our city. We identified five problematic locations and of these five, three were motels, two were other businesses that were generating the majority of our calls of service and leading to arrests or just response by officers. In total, 55 officers participated in the program or the operation. When we did so, we actually didn't do the majority of this on overtime. We tried to mitigate the cost as much as we could by using, patrol has a one-shift-a-month payback cycle that they have to complete. So, what we would do is we try to utilize as much as those paybacks as we could to use a direct enforcement in that area where they'd be designed. They wouldn't be responding to calls of service. They would just be out there either doing outreach or enforcement efforts. Prior to completing as well as during the SARAH project, we met with business owners and we contacted them to see what they would be willing to do or work with us, listen to us or listen to their concerns, what they were. And then we developed a plan, which I'll touch on a little bit later, of how we were going to implement this. We also decided to try something new this time and try our very first ever social media campaign for SARAH project. We hadn't done this before as social media and the PDs rather knew. And I'll touch into that a little bit later, but that was a great success as well. And then we also implemented a lot of community outreach. And when I say that, I mean that when we're talking to these people, whether they be transits or drug offenders or prostitutes, we wanted to provide them with, if enforcement wasn't going to be taking place, we wanted to provide them with resources to get off the streets or to get out. And then also as well as just some old-school police work, you know, arresting people that need to go to jail that were committing these offenses. So, as far as the social media went, is that we routinely post updates as well as show some of the pictures of before and after photos of what had occurred. And then we'd also give them the statistics. We would let them know, hey, look on this operation, we made a total of nine arrests, we wrote X amount of citations, and we also relocated people to homeless shelters if they were willing to do so. And the public absolutely loved seeing this because it was the first time, I think, probably countywide, they had seen it. And these are just some of the comments that people posted saying, hey, thank you, I appreciate it. I feel safe walking the streets again once they saw the before and after photos. But truly what I discovered was the best part of this was that the people in the community, they could come and comment on this to us directly rather than go to council or call the police department. And what we'd do is I would go out or Nick would go out. We would contact the person and then say, hey, look, you know, you guys are doing a great job, but there's also a transient encampment behind this business that we were completely unaware of because nobody had contacted us and it wasn't visible from the streets. So, it was a great way of us, the police department, communicating with the public in general is also getting feedback for what we had done. And then, like I said, we continued with giving them updates. We would show, you know, this is what it looked like before and after. And again, continuously each time we would do it, we would get more and more comments and feedback. And then, as we were doing so, we'd start seeing some of our surrounding cities going, hey, you know, we haven't seen this before. This is a great idea. You know, we're thinking about doing this as well or we'd like to assist in your enforcement efforts. So, at the end of the project, which was five months, we handed out a total of 28 care packages. These are basically hygiene kits to people in the community that needed them. We made a total of 150 arrests and removed 11 encampments. This was done with Public Works as well as our SRT or Special Response Team or Special Resource Team to get the services that were needed. This is probably my favorite slide. It's an aerial map of Beach and Garden Grove Boulevard. It kind of points out some of the things that we did to clean up the area as well as help out. If you see it, at the top says bus stops removed. We had two problematic bus stops or bus benches on the north and south side of Garden Grove Boulevard. These areas, this is the areas that the transits would usually congregate, usually block the sidewalks with shopping carts. They'd also like to, they'd frequently be passed out. And this is where a majority of the drug use was being done. That was out open to the public. And these bus stops are very open to commuters as well as, you know, people trying to just walk down the street. They would have to walk into the street or walk around it. So, with working with OCTA, we were able to remove these buses or these bus benches. So, just clean up the area in general. So, people had to go elsewhere and can't just hang out in that area. I'd probably say that by far Chevron, which was one of our problematic areas, was absolutely the best as far as working with us. They were willing to install a 100-foot wrought iron fence on the west side of their property which prevented transits that panhandle on the freeway from going back and forth, taking off from us when we tried to contact them, as well as it just makes it a little bit more inconvenience for them to go to that area and hang out in front of the business and use drugs or consume alcohol. They also removed a bicycle rack that was not needed for their business. Once we discussed it with them, they realized that the bike rack really didn't serve a purpose. And they also added a bathroom locking mechanism where basically, you know, you'd have to come in and talk to the clerk before they just went into the bathroom. And the reason for this is they also added a blue light in there which we noticed that a lot of the population that was using drugs, they would quickly go into Chevron. They would inject whatever drug of their choice in the bathrooms and leave the needles out, which then people coming into our city or trying to use those restrooms would end up calling us. So, as well as they would just hang out in the bathrooms and get high. And then on the left side, we conducted two warrant inspections at the Garden Grove Inn and the Hospitality Motel. Multiple violations were documented at that time. We also had move-out orders for 29 people that were long-term residents there. If you guys aren't too familiar with those motels, there's a ton of sex registrants registered there as well. And we noticed, and that's why I touched on earlier, why we had CPS come out there when we did our warrant inspections, we actually provided four families with resources to get out of those motels as we didn't think it was the most ideal location for them to be at. And then, at the conclusion of it, when we were analyzing everything that we did, like I said earlier, we had five problematic locations that were generating the majority of the calls of service. What we did was we analyzed the year prior, the same exact dates to the year, the five months that we did this year. In total, we reduced calls of service by about 100 in those five months. So, if you can imagine if an officer's patrolling the Vaughn's parking lot at Valley View and Chapman for vehicle burglars or porch pirates or whatever it is, that's 100 times that he's now not having to respond to Beach and Garden Grove Boulevard, which is virtually hundreds of man-hours. And then probably our most impressive stat was we reduced calls of service that resulted in arrests by 58%. Now, why that's even more important than the 100 calls is that usually when, you know, we actually take somebody into custody, whether they go to Orange County Jail or they just come to our jail, a lot of times they take medical clearance. So, again, a single arrest could be as short as 30 minutes, which is not likely, or up to four or five hours if you have to get medical clearance or get them booked into Orange County Jail. And with only having, you know, between one to three officers in that district at a time, obviously you could see how draining that was on our manpower. And that's it. Like I said, there's a lot more in the booklets when you guys get a chance to review it. You can look at it. But I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have or hear any comments you guys have. And I appreciate you guys' time.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Rice. Good, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a...
I think we got a question.
I do have a question for you. First of all, I want to just congratulate you and thank you for focusing in that area. I know it's been a constant headache for many moons and do appreciate your service there. This SARAH project, is it still ongoing or are we wrapping it up or?
Yeah, we actually wrapped it up. The end date was, I believe, mid-February. February 27th is actually we concluded it. We're still compiling some of the statistics right now. And once we look at it and we figure out what we did right, what we did wrong, we're going to probably pick up another location. But we'll still monitor that area for, you know, any type of increase in calls of service or crime.
Thank you.
And, you know, if I could just add, Councilman Bridgum, as you know, there's a lot of terrific redevelopment going on along Beach Boulevard now with some new retail centers coming in and some other stuff, some new residential products. So, I know between our police department and our building code, we're going to be going back to some of these places and, you know, paying attention to them. So, like I said, I think it's just, it's really helping the resources of our police department so that they can, you know, be focused on, you know, a lot of other areas as well as this. So, thanks.
Had the opportunity to drive through the storage facilities there. Quite an eye-opener.
I had a question. Maybe Mr. Stiles could answer. So, regarding the code enforcement side, I believe during that, those task force joint efforts, they did red-tag a number of units. And has that all been cleaned up or where, do you have any idea where we're at on that?
So, I don't have the exact count for the actual violations that we had. We red-tagged a total of 29 rooms that were immediate move-out orders. And those were longtime problematic residents there.
Thank you. Yeah, that's good.
I just have another question. So, for the red-tag, follow-up that question, are you thinking of follow-up, like periodically you're going to inspect just to make sure the property owners, you know, keep the condition, maintain the conditions?
Yeah, yes, we will. Officer Almeida will definitely follow up on that. It's one of the areas that he likes working and he knows almost everybody that stays at those motels because unfortunately, he's spending the majority of his time there. So...
Alright, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Alrighty then. With that, if it's okay with everyone, we will now move on to oral communications. And I do have two cards. So, Tom Raiber.
Three cards. Hi, council, Mayor Jones. I'm not here to talk about Cadillacs or Chevrolets or unicorns and pixie dust. My only reason to come here tonight is to say thank you. I'd like to thank the new Chief of Police, DaRee. He's the first person that responded to an email, a very nice email. So, thank you, Chief. I'd also like to go ahead and thank, finally know how to spell, you know, say his name, George Brightagum. I'd like to thank him. He helped me out to contact Public Works, Bill Murray, for visual signage on Tiffany and Bailey. So, the police can do their job. Since there was no signs on two of the sides of the street, they weren't ticketing those particular vehicles. I also like to thank Sergeant Befford. I got a ticket. Actually, I got one ticket but two offenses. One of the tickets was that I did not have a clear view in my vehicle, even though one window was down and one was half down. Not too sure what he meant. But I do have front tent and I do have LVT 70 which is approved by State of California. Someone over there, he looked at my vehicle. We talked a little bit and he gave me his approval. I did my first request on Garden Grove's website because some things I cannot research. And it was four calls that was placed to me from a blocked number that came from Garden Grove. Received email that they received it. And I made a typo on the phone number, so I sent that request to them. And last Thursday, I got a call from the new IT Director, Anon. Correct, Anon? Close, okay. Invited me to come to his office to discuss the call records of the city during that time span that I was requesting. So, you know, I had 30 years of telecom experience and computers and everything else. So, I used to have fun. So, I went to his office. He told me that nobody made a call from Garden Grove to my personal cell number. I said, that's incorrect. At least four times it was. So, we talked and I thought and I thought and I already knew what carrier the city has. I'm not going to disclose that. But that carrier originally, back in the 90s, was a toll-free T1 call. That's how they made their money to start the company that they have now. So, I said, do you guys get free local calls? And they do. City gets free local calls. So, anytime a person at the fire department, police department, or city hall calls a local number that's within 16 miles, that's not on the billing account. CDR that they have here which logs all calls only lasts two months, 60 days, and then it's wiped out. So, I talked to Anon today and I thanked him for what he has done for me. And because of what I've done, they're now looking into getting a bigger hard drive or something to start archiving the call records of the local calls that are not recorded. Again, thank you, but I drive a Ford and you should too. Thank you.
Linda Burquist.
Oh, good evening, Mayor Jones and the council. Thank you for your time and your help with our community. I'm a resident of 23 years of District 1, West End of Town. I'm also a member of a Facebook page for that community. Myself and many other in the community have noticed a large uptick of transient people probably in the last couple of months or so. They have been hanging out outside of businesses in the area of the Valley View and Lambsen area and made a lot of people feel unsafe. A few people actually were, a few people had these people come up and yell at them. There was one person outside the Starbucks on Lambsen and Valley View who was on the sidewalk. And as the kids were walking home from school, he was screaming at the kids. One person actually went up to this person, which point he grabbed a baseball bat apparently and started hitting on the telephone pole luckily instead of this person. Officers were called and they've been wonderful with their response. You know, we've, as I call it, been Mrs. Krabitzing quite a bit because of the situation. And the police officers have been fantastic. So, thank you very much. So, we're just hoping that the city becomes aware that we're beginning to have an uptick of this situation going on. Lately, it seems that the business owners are starting to ask these people to please move away. And now they've started moving into the West Grove Park, which is fine. People can be there, I understand that. But now the kids are starting to feel unsafe going to the park and parents... But now the kids are starting to feel unsafe going to the park and parents are nervous going over there, so it's just something I kind of wanted to bring to the council's attention of what's going on. I'm hoping that now with the passage of Proposition O and that we're getting, I understand, 10 more police officers to the city, that hopefully some of them can help out the wonderful officers who have been taking care of the situation and responding. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nicholas Dibbs.
Mayor Jones, members of the council, city staff, citizens of Garden Grove. My name is Nicholas Dibbs. I'm a honors graduate from Pacifica High School and became a teacher when I earned a degree at Cal State Long Beach. I've lived in District One for many years. I want to thank the mayor for initiating seven years ago the annual Garden Grove College Graduates Reception. So this year, we're going to have the seventh one. And so Mayor, thank you for doing that. I've been one of the sponsors for the last three years, this year and the last two, and it's what a joy it is to recognize our college graduates from Garden Grove. And so for those who don't know or haven't heard about the event, if you're a recent college graduate who lives in Garden Grove, be sure to go to the city's website, ggcity.org/grads or call the Office of Community Relations at 741-5280 before May the 9th to RSVP so you can be recognized. And last year, every year it seems to get bigger with more graduates, last year there were 35 students, recent graduates, who were recognized. Why is it important to recognize our college graduates? Because they've worked hard and they deserve the recognition and it's a partnership between the city, the business community, and of course the students who are there. So this year, the event is sponsored by Garden Grove Shell, Garden Grove Tourism Promotion Corporation, Signal Hill Petroleum, the Garden Grove Strawberry Festival, Kiwanis Club of Greater Garden Grove, Paris Baguette, the Garden Grove Rotary Club, Garden Grove Unified School District, and yours truly, Nicholas Dibbs. So I'm just pleased to be part of this effort and to be one of the sponsors. And again, residents who know of a college graduate, recent college graduate, are encouraged to go and get them RSVP so they can attend. I want to do what I've done in the past, which is just read briefly a letter that I write to the graduates, high school as well as college. And I start off by saying, "Blessed are the peacemakers, for they shall be called the children of God," from Matthew 5:9. "Success," as I prefer defining it, "is devoting and utilizing your career, talents, and abilities, helping others and oneself achieve much-needed positive change for a better future, nation, and world." Someone once said, "When you discover a job and career you enjoy doing, you will never work a day in your life. As such, this is my first piece of advice to you, the recent college graduates and high school graduates, to choose a job and career that you enjoy doing because you will be devoting about 80,000 work hours during your lifetime of work. Secondly, I ask you to please devote your talents and abilities and precious 80,000 work hours during your lifetime, working in a career to help achieve much-needed positive change, because it is the right thing for each of us and all of us to do. This means achieving a better future by helping others, your community, city, nation, and the world. This also means putting people's welfare and the greater good of individuals and humanity ahead of greed, corruption, and unfair and unethical results and outcomes. In closing, I ask you to please Google and read the Beyond Vietnam speech given over 50 years ago by Martin Luther King Jr. and to dedicate your life's precious time, work, and endeavors, helping others and yourself achieve a better future, community, nation, and world, very much in need of positive change and freedom with liberty and justice for all." That's my, in essence, that's my message. I try to give back as best I can in this endeavor as well as many other things I'm involved in. So thank you, Mayor, and the council for putting this on and it'll be the seventh year. So thank you very much and I'm pleased to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And I also want to compliment the mayor and this council. At the last meeting debating and deciding on the Orange County Fire Authority issue, what a wonderful job all of you did, putting in the excellent, putting in the hours and the time both before the meeting and during the meeting. So I'm proud to live in Garden Grove and to have each of you on the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the cards I have. So with that, we will recess and conduct other agency business. We'll go on to successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll for successor agency?
Member Bridegum?
Here.
Member O'Neill?
Here.
Member Tu Ha Wen?
Here.
Member Klavenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Wen?
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Yeah.
And Chair Jones?
Here. We already did oral communications simultaneously with city council. Consent items, just 2A and 2B, receive and file the minutes and approval of the warrants. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Any matters from agency members? None, we will adjourn to sanitary district.
Time I'd like to open up the Garden Grove Sanitary District Board Meeting. Madam Clerk, if you could call roll for the sanitary district.
Member Bowie?
Yeah.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Klavenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Wen?
Here.
Member Tu Ha Wen?
Here.
Vice President Bridegum?
Here.
And President O'Neill?
Thank you very much. If everybody's had a chance to look at the minutes, consent items, we just have one item to approve the minutes for March 26th. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Thank you.
Any matters? No, seeing none. We'll go ahead and adjourn until the May 28th meeting. Thank you. Back to council.
All righty, we will reconvene. City council takes us on to consent items. We've already taken action on 3A and 3B. It's recommended that the balance be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull any items.
Make a motion?
Second.
Call the vote.
All righty. Thank you. Takes us on to commission committee matters, 4A, appointments to the Measure O Citizens Oversight Committee. I don't know if you want to say anything Scott or if there's anything to say other than sort of did a loose poll and tried to get a Democratic as we could opinion of out of the applications that we had received and we came up with a list that I have submitted to the city clerk.
Correct. Would you like me to read? So the appointments to the Measure O Oversight Citizens Committee, Steve Sanders, Sir Bischof, Dr. Les Malo, Mark Mechanic, Sunny Wen, Marissa Salisos, and Sandy Thomas. And with that, you'll need to make a motion and a second and get full approval of the council, or majority of the vote.
I'll move in a second.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, takes us on to items for consideration. We have a couple, so 5A, purchase and sale agreement for sale of former fire station number six.
That's correct. Item 5A is approval of a purchase and sale agreement for the sale of the former fire station number six located at 12111 Chapman Avenue, Garden Grove, and Mr. Park is here to give the report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. In 2015, city staff conducted an analysis of the fire department's capital needs and determined that the construction of a new fire station six facility at West Haven Park was optimal to meet the infrastructure needs of the fire department. Built in 1971 on the site of a converted single-family home and located at the corner of Chapman Avenue and Debbie Lane, Fire Station Number Six lacked the capacity to hold the necessary vehicles, equipment, and manpower to adequately serve the large buildings and multi-story hotels within the area. As a result, on September 25th, 2015, the city council authorized the execution and delivery of the lease revenue bonds, Series 2015A, to refund and upsize the 2002 certificates of participation. This action produced funding for various public capital improvement projects, including a replacement fire station for Fire Station Number Six located at West Haven Park. In November of 2018, the city unveiled the new Fire Station Six facility and officially began providing services to the community, effectively resulting in the vacation of the old Fire Station Six facility at 12111 Chapman Avenue. With this transition, city staff received direction from the city manager to move forward with the sale of the old fire station and as such, city staff proceeded to have the property appraised and posted to LoopNet for sale. This was posted at the appraised value of $525,000. The property listing remained on LoopNet for two months during which the city offered, during which the city received two formal offers. The higher of the two offers in the amount of $500,000 was submitted to and approved by the city manager for city council consideration. Government Code Section 37350 authorizes the city to dispose of real property for common benefit. The proposed disposition here will benefit the city and the community by providing additional housing for family while eliminating the city's liability for maintenance and upkeep of the property. Approval of the purchase and sale agreement will enable the city and the buyer to open escrow, allow for a period of inspection of the property, and the ultimate transfer of payment of the sale proceeds to the city and the title to the buyer. This period will further allow staff to present the proposed sale to the Planning Commission for review of general plan consistency. This will take place at the May 2nd Planning Commission meeting. As stated earlier, the buyer has agreed to pay the city $500,000 to purchase this property and with that, it is recommended that the city council approve the purchase and sale agreement for the sale of the old Fire Station Six facility located at 12111 Chapman Avenue in the amount of $500,000. That concludes this presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Sean. Any questions?
Question, I think I know the answer. This is a as-is sale.
Correct.
So the city's not liable for any, anything after that.
No, sir.
If they accept it, so, okay, thank you.
I do have a question as well. Has the owner or the new, soon-to-be owner, if approved, indicated what they plan on using that for, the property?
They have not specifically, but...
They can only use it as a single-family residence. So we did not change the structure, we just made a bigger garage for the fire truck.
Defensive garage.
Yeah, so it's basically a single-family home with a garage that can fit an RV.
With a really big garage, okay.
Correct. Yeah, so, but the property zone are one and so it can only be used for residential purposes.
Rugby and basketball court.
There we go. Indoor, indoor sports complex.
Yeah, it's got that big crazy garage. Okay, thanks. Any other questions or comments, the staff at this time? Otherwise, a motion to approve the sale?
I'll move to approve it.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, that takes us on to 5B, which is approval of the Third Amendment to the agreement with the County of Orange to provide forensic services.
Correct. And I believe that someone from the police department should be here to give the report very soon.
If not, I can basically report to the city council that this is actually a standing contract, it just needs to be extended for another year. We...
He made it.
But if you want more information, Captain Alfara is here to provide you that information.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and council members. The current contract that we have with the Orange County Forensic Department expires on June 30th, 2019, and as recommended by the police department and pursuant to Garden Grove Municipal Code, Section 2.50.060 Subsection C, the finance director has determined that the Orange County Forensic Department is the only provider of forensic services in Orange County. DNA is the leading technology for gathering forensic evidence and solving crimes. Having a forensic scientist assigned to Garden Grove for DNA casework has dramatically reduced the time to obtain crime lab results, which has made the detective unit a more effective and efficient unit. The police department is very satisfied with the level of service we are receiving from Orange County Sheriff's Crime Lab. The financial impact for fiscal year 2019-2020 is estimated to be $532,109, an increase of approximately $15,324 from fiscal year 2018-2019. It is recommended that the city council approve the amendment agreement with the County of Orange to provide forensic services to the police department in the amount of $532,109 for fiscal year 2019-2020 and to authorize the mayor to execute their agreement on behalf of the city and make minor modifications as appropriate thereto. I'm open to any questions or comments.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Not, then can I get a motion?
Motion, Cooper?
Second.
Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
Takes us on to matters. We do have one agenda for discussion, discussion on a proposed letter to Orange County mayors and city managers regarding AB 32 Weber, regarding peace officers deadly force, as requested by Councilmember Bridegum. So I'll turn over the floor to Councilmember George.
Thank you. We, you know, I got wind of this proposal, AB 392, which would change the use of force standard throughout the state. On its face, an average person would look at it and think, "Oh, that sounds reasonable." But what they want to do is change the standard from one of objective reasonableness to one of necessity. And that brings the connotation and ramification of hindsight that the police officer at the time wouldn't have. For example, somebody pulls a gun on a police officer or a citizen in the community and the officer is forced to make that split-second decision and he has to shoot that suspect to save that person's life or his own life, but then later it's determined that the gun was a toy or a fake. Even though it looks real, now that officer would face criminal charges and the city would have civil ramifications. Another thing that it does is it seeks to address issues that officers wouldn't know when it pertains to identity. So for example, an officer is driving around the town, he gets a radio call that the bank was just robbed. Suspect is a male Asian with a pink shirt on and blue pants and he's a block away and he sees a male Asian with a pink shirt and blue pants, so he goes to stop him to see if it's him. The guy turns around with a screwdriver and comes at the officer with a screwdriver. The officer's forced to use force. But then later, it's determined that that guy wasn't the suspect in the bank robbery. Now the officer faces going to prison for making that split... even though he was attacked by the suspect with a screwdriver, he still faces criminal ramifications and the city legal ramifications. So I was very happy we sent the letter out to our assemblymen and everybody on this dais signed it and we sent our opposition to this, really don't think it's good for our police departments, I don't think it's good for our recruiting efforts, good luck getting somebody to sign on to be a police officer, if this is law of the land. And also, not to mention, the city's financial liability should this pass, we're, you know, a lot of cities are going to be sued into bankruptcy over this stuff, so I am further asking, and I'm grateful that everybody was willing to send that letter, but I'm further asking that we would go ahead and send letters off to the Orange County mayors and city managers of the various cities in the county, requesting them to join us in our opposition of that assembly bill.
Thank you, George, for championing that and bringing it forward and letting us all be signed on and be a part of it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'll make the motion to do that. Yeah, I was gonna say, I'll make the motion to do that, but I also wanted to say that I read the text of the bill, and as like George said, on the face, an average person may say, "Hey, this is a good, good thing." But if you actually dig into word by word and what that means and it affects our police department and that individual of criminal, you know, they're trying to do their job, but yet they're going to face these possible criminal actions. So, yeah, I didn't have any problem supporting that.
Second. Call the vote.
Seven yes votes.
Okay, so now we're just on to general matters. Anything else you'd like to say for the cut of the order?
I do have a general, actually, two. First one, the Garden Grove Unified School District Community Dinner last night was just an awesome event. I think everybody that showed up, it just really showcased our students, our children and their talents. I remember going to these talent shows when I was a kid, and you were listening to the kids sing and dance and do that, and, boy, you felt like putting cotton in your ears because, you know, a lot of them weren't that good, but we all clapped for them, and boy, the kids are just outstanding. The talent here in Garden Grove is beyond belief. I mean, the jazz band from Bolsa High, oh my God, they were unreal. And even the kids, the elementary school kids that were singing, oh my God, I'm just amazed. What was it, Zion?
Zion.
Just the talent in this community is beyond belief with our kids, so just something to be very proud of. My second item, as one of our speakers referred to it at Community Matters, Garden Grove has experienced an influx of aggressive panhandling. While I was campaigning door-to-door, I spoke to many residents about this issue. Many of our community members are inundated by these aggressive panhandlers when they leave certain businesses within our city. There's organized groups from outside of our county that are regularly coming in to our community for the purposes of preying on our residents. Many are seen parking their brand-new automobiles with paper plates before they put on their disheveled clothing and begin their shifts panhandling in our city. Some even utilize young children as props to maximize their efforts and the amount of profit they get for panhandling. These panhandling, panhandlers are becoming increasingly aggressive. They're blocking people's paths, they're yelling profanities, looking into their vehicles while asking for money, you know? So basically, they're attempting to scare you. If you don't give them money, they're going to break into your car. They use aggressive language, and now they're actually becoming physical. Last week, my wife was confronted by an aggressive woman while attempting to shop at one of the local establishments. The woman kept insisting that my wife would give her money, and the woman then waited for my wife to finish shopping and leave the store, standing next to our vehicle the whole time. The woman then insisted that my wife search her car for money to give to her. The lady finally decided to cease her aggressiveness once another woman came by and offered to give her a dollar. Last week, an elderly woman in my district was approached in front of the Von's supermarket. Again, an aggressive panhandler. It aggressed, it escalated to a point where she was knocked to the ground physically and her purse taken. This is at least the second time that I'm aware of in six months that a physical escalation has occurred at the same location. Our community clearly has a safety issue that this elected body is responsible to address. We need to arm our police with the tools they need to do their job, to keep our community safe, a place to live, work, and visit. I'm proposing that our city attorney look into crafting an ordinance that would prohibit this aggressive panhandling and panhandling within 200 feet of a grocery store, a bank, a gas station, or a business with an ATM. Ordinances similar to this have already been established in cities like Anaheim, Long Beach, and San Clemente. I understand there are First Amendment issues and complexities in crafting this, so I charge our city attorney with thinking outside the box in its phrasing. Knowing that the Supreme Court has not directly covered this, and historically, the state courts have upheld these types of ordinances, I ask that it's drafted with public safety in mind, with either a prohibition or a permit component, whatever our city attorney in his best judgment deems most appropriate.
And I think for that, in order to do that, I would need a second to...
Is this just to direct the city attorney to research into what other city have been doing and whether there's some complication out of it?
And, yeah, and yes, and craft what he thinks would be most appropriate.
Before crafting it, can we ask him to report it first? Because I do not want us to dive into it until we got, you know, the attorney looked into it and advised us that, yeah, it looked like, you know, some sort of ordinance is reasonable, then we would direct him to craft the ordinance?
Sure.
But before we get to that point, let us, let authorah him to do some research first.
Sure. And I would task him, I know it's going to be a difficult endeavor, and this will be a very, a good opportunity for our city attorney to shine for our community and prove his worth, so to speak. So, yeah, I'm, I am, I am all behind that. I want to get the ball rolling, though, and however you think is most appropriate, I would like to get the ball rolling so we can start taking action as a, as a body and...
Need a formal motion or just sort of...
Yeah.
Well, ultimately, I have to come back with an ordinance to present it to you, but if the council without formal motion wants me to look into it, I can report back to you. I can't promise it in the next meeting, but your second meeting in May, I should be able to, to report my findings. I will tell you that we already have solicitation regulations, but the prohibition is against soliciting vehicles from the public right of way. So you can't flag vehicles that are traveling, and the justification for that is, you know, traffic safety. And I can tell you now that ordinances that prohibit panhandling in general have been struck down as unconstitutional, so I have to look really hard as to whether aggressive panhandling does not enjoy First Amendment protection and how we can craft the language to withstand a challenge from civil rights groups.
Yeah.
Whatever is most appropriate, however, to make it happen, but that's why you're the magic attorney, so.
I would motion.
The motion is from, from his customer.
You don't need a motion. I'll just, I'll just report back.
I thought what I understood was to report back. We don't even need the formality of a motion.
Shouldn't we take a vote at least to give the direction since we're given staff work and that kind of stuff? I think it probably is appropriate that we do that.
My concern is that this item is not agendized, so the only motion it can take is to agendize it at your next meeting for action.
Yeah. Um, I, yeah, that's why...
This is why I'm offering to...
Yeah, I think we get there, I think we get there faster if we just sort of give an unofficial direction to go study it and bring something back.
Because I know, like, the last one we did, I did the same way. We voted on it, so...
Yeah.
Because you wanted to have a discussion where you can take action at the subsequent meeting. So the rules or procedures are, you can, any council member can add any item to the agenda, but no action would be taken. If you wanted an item for an action, then you need a motion of a majority of the council to agendize it for action.
I see, okay.
In this case, you're not going to be taking action, you're just going to get a report from me, and after you get the report, you can decide whether to give direction to draft the ordinance or not.
Thank you.
Right, and then that report, I would be interested, the cities that he mentioned, their current ordinances, and then obviously, whatever you come up with. And then at that point, we could agendize something for a vote or action.
Can, can you clarify, because earlier during the Housing Authority meetings, I asked Danny to, you know, do some study, and we vote to, the council vote to allow that. So why is it different than, than voting now? What's the difference between the two?
Well, I think that you wanted an item on the agenda for action, and that's why you took that action. I'm not asking you to take any action and any report.
And by all means, take whatever time you need. I mean, I'm not looking to have this rushed, or I want to, I want to do it right, so, please.
George, John?
Uh, yeah, just a few things. So I hope everyone had a good Easter and had some time with family, and looking forward to the Strawberry Festival coming up in May, you know, possibly Steel Craft opening up early summer. Looking forward to that. Kind of wanted to mention the kids in Garden Grove School District are really amazing. I'm really amazed at the talent that these kids have. It just blows me away every time, between the dance performances and the bands, the, the work that goes in. I know as a, I'm not a teacher for music, but the work that must go in to wrangle those kids up to get them to play in that capacity is really amazing, so. That's all I got. Thanks.
Yes, I just want to shout out to the Garden Grove Unified Schools District. A very proud, my kid go to Garden Grove, you know, part of the Garden Grove Unified Schools District, so we have a lot of talent. We're definitely a gem.
Shout out to them.
So first, I missed this one this year, so I'm sad, but I got the opportunity by invitation from the University of California, Irvine, to attend a discussion led by National Leader of the Me Too Movement, Trana Burke, which brings me to the issue that I wanted to speak to today at Matters, and that's to, one, thank my council colleagues, because at the last meeting, they, with a 7-0 vote, proclaimed April Sexual Assault Awareness Month, which I know to them was just a yes vote, but definitely impacted my life as a survivor of rape. And once I shared that with a lot of individuals throughout the community, we got a lot of positive feedback. Although this movement is, should be categorized as social justice, it's often not taken very seriously or with the urgency that other movements have, because all of these victims, all of these survivors are living with wounds that people can't see, and so out of sight, out of mind. I shared some statistics regarding Grove at the last meeting, and I don't know that people really heard what I said, and so I wanted to reiterate them. In the year of 2018, there were 368 reports or arrests regarding domestic violence. 368 alone in one year in the city of Garden Grove. There were 54 reports or arrests of rape, and there were 50 reports or arrests regarding sexual child abuse. 50, 54, 368. That, to me, is an urgent and pressing matter. As someone who did not report, I know what it feels like to be afraid to walk at night from my car to my apartment, whether it's being afraid of the dark, whether it's crying myself to sleep, eating a bucket of ice cream, or having the support of my colleagues on an issue that's extremely important to me. This changes on a day-to-day basis, but what doesn't change is the fact that we're not talking about this issue, we're not educating our young residents, our young students, and older individuals who may not be able to conceptualize what this means in a grander landscape. And so I bring this to your attention because tomorrow, Wednesday, April 24th, 2019, is Denim Day, and this is part of the National Sexual Assault Awareness Campaign to bring awareness and to stand in solidarity with survivors. And where this stems from was that the Italian Supreme Court, where a convinced, in their Italian Supreme Court ruling, where a rape conviction was overturned because the justices felt that since the victim was wearing extremely tight pants, she must have had to help her rapist take off the pants, therefore implying consent. So they overturned the conviction because she was wearing tight pants. The next day, women who worked for the parliament in solidarity with the victim, the survivor, wore jeans to work. And so now this has become an international and a national campaign to support survivors. And so I found out that some of the staff will be wearing jeans tomorrow, and I hope to see a picture on social media, bringing awareness to this fact and in tying into the fact that we passed a proclamation to declare April Sexual Assault Awareness Month. So I hope that you all take part in wearing some denim tomorrow and showing your support if you post a picture. Trust me when I tell you, there's more people than, that you know, that will definitely feel really great to know that there's people out there supporting you in that, in that lonely endeavor that you go through every day. Took me 10 years before I could speak about it openly, so I know there's more individuals like me out there.
Yeah. Steph?
Really quick, I just want to make mention of an opportunity I had last week. I was very honored to be able to check out the Public Works Project at West Haven Park, the reservoir project with Bill Murray and Senior Water Engineer Rebecca and the whole team that's working on that project. I didn't realize how massive a reservoir actually is and how much work it takes just to actually unearth the reservoir, let alone work on it and climb down it, which I did. I was a little nervous at first, but, but I made it 40 feet down inside this reservoir to get to see tax dollars at work and to see what is actually needed in terms of our infrastructure in our city. Our water is obviously extremely important to us, the safety of our water, the quality of our water, and when you have well, or reservoirs that are aging, there's work that needs to be done. So to see them retrofit for earthquakes or potential other issues, to see the, the quality of work and the detail of work going into making sure that your water's safe, it was a very unique and exciting experience. And I know that Public Works Director Bill Murray posted some photos on Facebook last week. If you haven't seen them, they're, they're all over. It's, it's very interesting to be able to see the inside of that reservoir and to see the work that's happening. So I commend all of them for their hard work and their dedication, and I thank Public Works Director Bill Murray for the opportunity. Thank you.
Steph?
Okay, give me a second here. I have three items that I would like to, to point to, you know, to the publics. 50 years ago, the, the veterans of the Vietnam War came homes. I think it's in 1972, '73. And when they came home, they was not receiving the proper recognition for their sacrifice. Some 53,000 US soldiers, about 5,000 Korean soldiers have died defending, you know, the freedom for the South Vietnamese people. Needless to say, we are forever indebted to their sacrifice and their family sufferings. And I think about a few years ago, our government have started to realize that, that was not, that they have no justice, and so we start to recognize the sacrifice of the veterans of the Vietnam Wars. Tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM at the mortuary named Montalalo Mortuary, we will be welcoming one of the MIA, Mission in Action, a Navy officer named Raun A. Guera. A dozen of the Vietnamese, South Vietnam veterans, I am included, even though I'm not a veteran, will be there to honor him and express our gratitude to Mr. Guera. He is finally home. His remain have been verified and flown to Hawaii a weeks ago. And last weekend, we have a memorial services for him, and tomorrow he will be, we will be there to, to praise for his sacrifice and welcoming home. The address for the cemetery is Montalalo Mortuary at 1316 Witte Boulevard, Montebello City. And many of us, including some veterans from the Legion 555 in, on Beach Avenue, and us will be gathering at the Vietnam War Memorial on Old American Way in the city of Westminster, so that we can couple together and heading north to, you know, to, to, to join the memorial services for Mr. Guera. Anyone who would like to join us, please come. We will figure out how we can ride together to, to that place. The other things, the other two main programs that I would like to invite the publics is on Sunday, the 28th, the Vietnam War era veterans throughout Southern California and the Vietnamese veterans will have a memorial services from 10:00 AM... the Vietnamese veterans will have a memorial services from 10:00 AM to about 2:00 PM, also at the Vietnam War Memorial. I will be there and I hope some of you will be able to join us to, you know, express our gratitude to the men and women in uniform that fought in the Vietnam War. And then on the evening of April 30th, Tuesday, April 30th, the Vietnamese and the, and many of the veterans will have another memorial services with a focus on the Vietnamese boat people and the veteran who, you know, made the ultimate sacrifice. Almost a million people died under the sea when they tried to escape Vietnam. It, we will review some of the picture and the movies of the, of the boat people. Some of them did not make it. Other made it to various refugee camps, but was forced to return back to Vietnam or die in the, in the refugee camp and was buried, you know, throughout Southeast Asia. Their graves site in very difficult condition, but maybe now and then some of us try to come back to Southeast Asia just to meet them so that they are, you know, so that we can pray for them. And if anyone who can join us, it will be Tuesday evening from 6:00 PM to about 9:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager's Costa.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members, just two quick items. One is, as we've previously announced, Patricia Song is our new Finance Director and Ms. Song will be starting with us this Monday. So is, I'm sure I'll get a chance to introduce her to all of you very quickly and I think we'll plan, probably not as, quite as large as the new Chief DeRae's reception that we just had, but we will certainly have a reception for her as well. She's anxious to get started and to work and meet all of you. Secondly, the Orange County Trauma Intervention Program is something I sent a little note, I think, to some council members. I wanted to mention it to the public. It's a nonprofit here in Orange County that partners with police agencies and other governmental entities. Their partnership focuses on providing support to victims, witnesses, and family members who are affected by traumatic events. Volunteers that participate in the TIP program provide support to survivors of tragedies. So our police department has become one of 25 police agencies that partner with TIP. And I know the TIP organizers or the Executive Director have contacted some of you and to try and build those partnerships. So that's happened. What I wanted to say to any of our residents that are listening, community members, if you would like to be a volunteer in the TIP program, especially working in Garden Grove with our police department, you can go to www.wwww dot...
I thought I was in a tub there.
www.toptiporancecounty.org. You can learn about the organization and become a volunteer and I, it'll be a good partnership, something you might be interested in. That's all I have. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Omar, do we have any need for a closed session?
We don't have a closed session today.
I think so, just checking. Okay, bear with me. This will take, this will take just three minutes, but I promise you'll be blown away by the caliber of Garden Grove backgrounds that I'm about to share with you. Tonight, we're going to adjourn the meeting in memory of three very distinctive people who were part of the fabric of the Garden Grove community. First is Laverne Reeve Snyder. Laverne, who sadly passed away on April, Wednesday, April 10th, was a Garden Grove resident for 76 years. He proudly served in the United States Army Air Force for three years, completing 21 missions and ending his military service as a second lieutenant. In 1946, Laverne opened a State Farm Insurance Office on Garden Grove's historic downtown Main Street and served as a volunteer firefighter at the fire station on Garden Grove Boulevard. Laverne was one of the original Garden Grove Elks Lodge Number 1952 members and past president of the Garden Grove Strawberry Festival Association and of the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce. And he was recognized as Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce Man of the Year. He was a member of the Garden Grove Host Lions Club, Garden Grove Moose Lodge Number 620, the Boys and Girls Clubs of Garden Grove, Garden Grove Historical Society, and served on the city's Parks, Recreation, and Arts Commission. Laverne is survived by his three daughters, eight grandchildren, and 21 grandchildren, great-grandchildren. The city expresses heartfelt condolences to his family and deepest appreciation for the many wonderful moments and memories Laverne Reeve Snyder leaves behind. So that's number one. Thank you for being here. Next is Frank Barbero. Frank Barbero moved to Garden Grove from Detroit at the age of 11 and recently passed away. After graduating from Garden Grove High School, he attended USC and graduated magna cum laude with a BA in Political Science in 1965 and was accepted to law school at USC graduating in 1968. While in law school, he was awarded the Warner Trust Grant, he as a Bauer Fellow and received the Legion Lex Scholarship. Also, while attending college, he worked as a lifeguard at the Disneyland Hotel and the Balboa Bay Club. He was Fearless Frank on the Disneyland Jungle Cruise as skipper narrator. And because he was Walt Disney's favorite narrator, he was allowed to escort visiting dignitaries such as John Kennedy, Richard Nixon, Henry Kissinger, and a host of other celebrities. Yeah. In 1977, he was a founding partner and civil litigation attorney of Horton, Barbero, and Riley, practicing law until 2005. His firm, which he founded, represented the 23,000 investors in Lincoln Savings against Charles Keating. That is part of the early 90s savings and loan crisis, as well as the victims of the MGM Grand Hotel Fire in Las Vegas. Mr. Barbero became politically, politically active in his 30s and remained so until his passing, leaving a legacy of activism and the reputation of being a voice for those who needed him. Lastly, Robert Campbell. Robert Campbell, or Rob, began his 29-year career as a Garden Grove Police Officer in 1989. In 2001, he worked in the Special Investigations Unit. He worked on a DEA task force for about three years and was promoted to Master Officer before returning to patrol. With his dedication to his job as a Garden Grove Peace Officer, he still found time in his downtime to play softball. Rob retired in September of 2018 and sadly, he passed away unexpectedly on April 12th, 2019. He is survived by his mother, two sons, and two stepdaughters. And with that, we will adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you all.